Remember the buckets they used to look at?
I know when I present now, I couldn't just give you a copy of this slide.
And I took a note out of it. I love that.
You write down your question, you look up the slide later, you miss something?
I did. Okay. So then you need to like, you have to cut in the, you have to cut in the, you have to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. You know, it's very important to cut in the. I thought it was seven. Glad he told me.
Good evening. Welcome to the April 5th, 2021 Public Hearing to Accept and Expend Gifts or Grants Over $5,000. This evening, we have a gift of $7,000 from Rockefeller Philanthropy Advisors to Thornton Sperry Elementary School. I wanted to turn it over to the Superintendent.
Well, I'm happy, thank you. I'm happy to just invite Principal Julie DeLuca and our System of Care Coordinator Fern Sidon to describe just briefly the gift, and we do so, I'm sure they'll say, with our great thanks.
Great. I did make a little call apart. I know it's really quick, but. Because it's really pretty. Okay. So last spring, I wrote this grant before I got this new job, and it was to follow up with the system of care work we had done in the school with trauma-informed schools. And we were trying to create a reflective practice group, and we had done some work with a reflective practice group for a couple of years, and our thought was to use the diffusion model to see if we could build teacher leaders who would then create their own system of care, trauma-informed work with their peers in the school. And so we created, the grant was for $7,000, and it was to create three reflective practice groups, and hoping to have about 15 to 24 people, and it was really that peer-to-peer model to develop teacher leaders in this area. And we wanted to make sure that we also got consultation for the learning communities from an outside person, which we've hired Cassie Ackley's company to help us with. So. So the anticipated outcomes of this was to increase the capacity for members of the learning community to model and teach students trauma-informed SEL skills, and to increase the capacity of members of the learning community to help dysregulated students by using trauma-informed response framework, and to help educators design and create classrooms that were trauma-informed, integrating their principles into daily practice. And so this is the group that we started this year. We got the grant, and we started this group this year, and these are the participants. We've been able to, it was a little smaller than we thought because of COVID and people not having a lot of time, but we have a lot of people helping, working on this and growing as a community together. And it provided books for each participant, consultation from Dr. Allison Roy, and small stipends for teacher leaders, and small stipends for the participants. And so I wanted to turn it over to Julie at this point, because it has really, these are some quotes from the teachers, and I think it has really been a model that is a really a really great model for transformative work in schools.
So very quickly, I remember many years ago when we started this work, we asked two questions. One, how will we know we've arrived at a system of care? What will we be seeing? And two, what are those measures? And two, how do we know this work will be sustainable? And I'm happy to say that this particular group and the work they're doing is a perfect example of that we have arrived in a system of care, and we know that because we have teachers, teaching teachers, educators, teaching educators, where they may have been the students years ago, they are now the teachers, and they have become the experts on social-emotional learning and trauma-informed care in our classrooms. In addition to that, we know we are sustaining that work, and again, is by some things that because of this reflective practice group, and we know it's through reflection where we can sustain this work. We have many things happening in the building that are very structured to the system and the culture, and it's no longer the leaders that are responsible for the culture, but it's all of us that are responsible for the culture. And we've really shifted our culture from a compliance framework to a connection framework. We went from counting behavioral slips to creating student concern in check-in forms. We have teachers that instead of having kids leave the classroom for check-ins, now do the check-ins in the classroom, quiet spaces, so again, instead of students having to leave their learning spaces, they have quiet spaces where they can go to take a break, to self-regulate, sensory pathways in our schools. So all these are conditions, and again, conditions of safety, care, and connection that again gets supported by this reflective group that's allowing all of our students to be safe and to learn, because we know these conditions must be in place in order for students to learn. Especially this year, we've seen significant progress because of all the transitions and the social-emotional learning needs of all of our kids. And so this work and our educators in our building have really helped to create those cultures and conditions for our kids. So I want to thank Fern, because she's led this work, also Allison, who's also been very much a part of growing this expertise in our building, and I look forward to continuing to do this even without a grant, but to continue this peer-to-peer learning within the school. And that's pretty much it. Do you have any questions?
Okay, first, I'd like to open it up to any comments from the public. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comments, and then I will open it up to any questions or input from the board. Mark?
Thank you. I just wanted to just briefly comment and say that what you heard Mrs. DeLuca say was that we've arrived at a system of care model in our district. And it's always true that whenever we achieve something, and when we talk about having achieved it, it doesn't mean that we're perfected it. We'll say that again tonight when we talk about Merrimack Education Reimagined. So of course, there are always areas where continued evolution and improvement is always the goal. So when we talk about successes, we don't ever imply that we've got it figured out 100%. But what I think this is evidence of is our continued effort to try and to work at it, and to not just say, well, you know, we've done as much as we can. And so sometimes where governance or perceptions are based on the exceptions to a rule rather than to the more common reality. And so of course, our work in system of care and social-emotional learning is evolutionary, but I just wanted to say that I think this grant reflects an understanding that we're doing some pretty cool things. So I want to thank Julie Fern, all the members of the team, and really the district team. So thank you.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? Shannon?
I just wanted to say thank you so much for constantly seeking out sources so that we can do more than what we even have in our resource bucket. I think that as we went through our budget cycle, we went over all of the different ways that we try to find resources that do not require taxpayer funding, or that will supplement what taxpayers are funding to move education forward. So this is a great example of the constant work that you're doing, uncovering all those financial resources to supplement what we're trying to do here. So great work. Thank you so much, and keep up the good work finding those third-party sources. Because again, the more we have, the more we can do, and we know that we've been struggling with that with all our alternative operational strategies this year. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Yeah, and I couldn't agree more. So thank you for coming tonight. Gent, did I say another?
Thank you. Just, I was just going to say thank you. I appreciate that model, and I think keeping students in the classroom, you know, the social-emotional wellbeing, we've been talking about it all year. So thank you very much for all you do and for working really hard to bring this money to Merrimack.
You're welcome. All right, thanks.
So are there any other questions, comments?
Any other question? No, I think we're all set.
Would you, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the gift of $7,000 from the Rockefeller Philanthropy Advisors, sorry, I got caught in my mask, with our gratitude, and just know that we will be putting it to amazing use. So thank you very much.
Do I have a second? I saw Jenna first. Any comments? Anyone want to speak to it? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. We certainly are very grateful for the Rockefeller Philanthropy Advisors, as well as the team and Fern for writing the grant. Thanks. It looks like we're right about at seven, so I think if we can go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we can go ahead and move into our public session. Please join with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is the Guidelines for Public Participation. Even though we are back in person here in the Matthew Thornton Room for our school board meetings, we understand that many community members may not feel comfortable coming here in person. Therefore, we've continued to allow public comments to continue to be sent in an email for the foreseeable future. To do this, you may send an email to publiccomment@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomment@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we received tonight, our goal is always to read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy and balyant, we would just have to not read public comments into the testimony. It's an all-or-nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments into our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would not be able to read them tonight if we can't read all of them. I'd just like to be sure to address this upfront, just in case we find ourselves in this position. Item number three is public participation. Shannon, do we have any public participation?
We do. We actually received two emails, one that has an address that we can enter into record, and the second did not have an address, but if that Senator will please check her email and reply to my email back, I would be glad to read it at the end of the meeting, or if it gets back in time for the end of this first letter. So the first is from Christopher Ortega at 12 Old Road. Let's scroll back up. Dear School Board, I am writing to you tonight on a non-agenda item that I am hoping you can read during public participation, Agenda Item Number Three. I am a former two-term School Board member and have had the pleasure of serving with a few of you. I thank all of you for your service to the Town of Merrimack and the school district. However, on this, his last night as a School Board member, I would like to specifically acknowledge the service and contributions of Board Member Andy Schneider from the perspective of someone who understands firsthand the sacrifice the service entails. Andy and I started our service together in 2007 as the first members of the school district budget committee, established after the revised town charter abolished its combined town budget committee. We served together there for a three-year term, at which point I got elected to the school board. Andy continued on the budget committee for a couple of more years, serving as its chair. He then joined the school board and has served for three full terms, nine more years. Oops, overscrolled. As you all very well know, after this past year especially, there are many decisions to be made that come before the board that are not clear-cut and are certain to make an equal number of constituents dissatisfied as those who are pleased. There were many of times in our service together that Andy and I did not see eye to eye on an issue, however, we were always able to disagree agreeably. Andy's dedication came not from self-interest, his children have long been out of high school, but a love of Merrimack and a commitment to a high-quality public education, accountability, and pragmatic fiscal budgeting. This, in my opinion, is public service in the truest sense of the words. The professional boxer and activist Muhammad Ali once said, "Service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth." Andy, thank you and congratulations on your service to Merrimack. After 14 years, your rent is paid in full and then some. Best wishes to you and enjoying the free time that will come to you in the future. Sincerely, Christopher Ortega. And we will hold off, hopefully our other constituent will send her email back, or her address back, so that we can enter her other comment into our record at the end of the meeting.
Great. Thank you, Shannon. Next, item number four, Merrimack Education Reimagined, setting the stage for innovation, comprehensive center, network, the Department of Education, and Merrimack's team. Bill Wilmot, Cast and UDL Network, John Fabrizio, Nancy Rose, Kim Yarlet, Bill Morris, Heather Barker, and Fern Sidon.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking Dr. McLaughlin and the Merrimack School Board for allowing us to present tonight. At a previous meeting this year, comments by Chair Waloumi spoke of a conversation that the Superintendent and her had, looking forward to our future, and looking at visioning, and looking at the pandemic, and where we'll come after that. Prior to that meeting, our team, that I'll introduce very shortly, embarked on a journey together with two consulting groups in other districts in New Hampshire and the Department of Education to reimagine education, not only in Merrimack but across our state. Our district continues to be innovative and responsive to students and to our current educational state that we currently sit in. We are into continuous improvement. We believe that Merrimack School Districts are a great place, and we believe in it. We believe that our community has supported us, and we have had many positive successes due to that relationship. Tonight in our presentation, we'll show you a glimpse into how we reimagine education and what our work we have to do in our future. So now I'd like to just introduce our team. Of course, myself, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Bill Morris, Coordinator of the REAL Program, Heather Barker, our Director of Student Services, Kim Yarlot, Principal of Reed's Ferry Elementary School, Fern Sidon, Coordinator of Social-Emotional Learning, Nancy Rose, Director of Technology and Library and Media, Bill Wilmot, UDL Implementation Specialist from Cast, and not with us tonight because she lives out of state and couldn't travel to come see us, is Jessica Griffin, Project Consultant for American Institution of Research, or AIR. So tonight, we have three takeaways that we hope our presentation leaves you with. The Merrimack School District has been committed to providing excellence in education through innovative practice. The Merrimack School District is positioned to leverage our community pandemic experience to accelerate and re-envision of the educational building on our foundation of innovation by developing a community-based strategic plan. And then, what comes next from Merrimack?
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see you. I haven't seen you in quite a while. I'm Kimberly Yarlot, Principal of Reed's Ferry School and part of this team. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for what we're going to be talking about this evening. So as Mr. Fabrizio mentioned, the process that we're outlining tonight is a result of a need to collectively and collaboratively address challenges and seize opportunities for what our future for education can become as a result of what we have learned and experienced this year. We are at a unique moment in time where we can begin to think about returning to school next year and what that will look like. Educational reform initiatives and movements are not new concepts, as educational systems have experienced many pivots since before the Industrial Revolution. Well-known philosopher John Dewey, in his days as educator, wisely stated, "The inclination to learn from life itself and to make the conditions of life such that all will learn in the process of living is the finest product of schooling." And likewise, former philosopher and educator Maxine Green implored educational systems to pay attention to the local and personal experiences so as to optimize reform efforts, stating, "Local knowledge and local coming together ought to counter the tendency towards abstraction, as should a conscious concern for the particular, the everyday, the concrete." We take the wisdom of these two influential educators and philosophers to dare us to reimagine our systems and be forward-thinking about the future of Merrimack's educational system at the local level, together, with, and for our students, staff, parents, and community. We share these reflections as considerations for tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see live people, right? So I'm the storyteller in the group, so sit back and relax, right? So Merrimack's pandemic innovation actually began with Dr. McLaughlin's decision to offer parents two choices for schooling for the 2021 school year. An in-person hybrid model and a remote hybrid model, with students receiving direct instruction two days a week and independent practice opportunities, the other three. Through discussions with the leadership team around ensuring equity across both models, Superintendent McLaughlin and Assistant Superintendent Fabrizio envisioned the role of coordinator of remote learning and the Remote Education Academy for Learning, or like we like to say, the REAL Program, and to our knowledge, the only formalized district-level remote program. And in fact, you all were visionaries in supporting that model and program, and we appreciate you on this journey with us. The REAL Program immediately became an impactful support for remote students, educators, and families. Over the first few months, teachers and students were supported by regular drop-ins to classes with immediate feedback. Educators were regularly supported through professional dialogue opportunities and professional development experiences. The district partnered with Demonstra Success, as well as utilized district experts to provide staff and parents training in all aspects of remote learning. In addition to the collaboration of weekly meetings with Heather Barker, Director of Student Services, and our parent group, parental voice was provided and learning occurred. In fact, 22 remote parents are on the beginnings of participating in a book study group together. The REAL Program has made great inroads, not only in providing training and support for all, but in also building a remote school culture. Real students, staff, and families learning remotely feel connected and invested. In December of this school year, while in a conversation with Commissioner Frank Etterblut, Dr. McLaughlin shared with him the model we were using for ensuring equity for all learners. The commissioner expressed a desire to learn more about Merrimack's REAL Program, as well as the district's full implementation. as well as the district's full implementation of the Canvas Online Program, um, which the state was providing to school districts free of charge. In fact, he was grateful for, uh, the school district as, uh, we were on the, uh, front line of implementing Canvas. So a day in the life for the REAL Program was put together for the commissioner. And he spent the day beaming into remote classes as if, as if he was Captain Kirk, being beamed onto the spaceship Enterprise. The commissioner that day boldly went where no commissioner had gone before. He had the opportunity to observe several remote teachers as well as Special Education Teacher of the Year, Mary Ann Sabit, as she was meeting the need of a remote student. During the course of the day, Commissioner Etterblut spent an hour with Nancy Rose and her very talented technology team as they, as they shared all that was involved in putting technology in the hands of children as well as supporting the district staff with implementing, implementing the Canvas Online Program. There are so many unsung heroes during this pandemic. And this group and their colleagues were some of them. The day ended with the commissioner meeting with all the teachers he saw during the day. His obvious, or his observational skills were very evident. And his reflection of the day and with the innovation he saw, he made the decision to invite our district to join a number of other districts as part of a state project tasked with re-envisioning education based on what we have learned this past year. And we have learned so much. And, uh, welcome the opportunity, um, um, to further continuous improvement and learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. As I said, to move forward in our journey, we sometimes have to look back and look to our recent history. We've been involved with several innovative ideas in this district. And with the support and the partnership with our board, we've been able to move forward. As you know, many of these were mentioned before, but just to name a few of them, we are still involved in our UDL Network with seven teams. The work we've done around system of care is a leader in the state. Our interventions and supports provided by student services and the evolution of student services and connections with families is outstanding. Our, our concept of all the curriculum work that Dr. McLaughlin and, and his teams have been involved with for the past twelve years in this district by using universal design, our response to intervention teams, our extracurricular athletic programs, our REAL Program, our restorative practices that we have just begun and moving into, our multi-tiered systems of support that we are embarking on a new journey with, the work around cultural diversity, and this work that you'll hear tonight around with the, with the comprehensive center network for school redesign. And also, uh, one recent major change is our work around, um, essential learning competencies around a redesign of our standards-based report card.
So we didn't want to lose sight of the fact that according to one of our founding fathers, John Adams, "Every problem is an opportunity in disguise." And boy, did COVID present us with some opportunities. So what we, uh, wanted to capture is as part of this process to move us forward, we have learned a tremendous amount of what we're capable of, um, on short notice and kind of by the seat of our pants in some cases, but, um, I think that we achieved some amazing accomplishments over the course of this last year, which I can't even believe it's been a year. And what we didn't capture in this slide is the fact that we, um, spent our summer, there were over two-hundred-and-twenty educators involved in different task forces who helped us plan a return to school and in many cases, we weren't quite sure what that was going to look like as we were trying to plan, which in and of itself was, uh, a major feat for a lot of teachers who, uh, I think their strength is in their ability to plan in concrete areas. And so to be asked to plan for the unknown is a particular challenge. So I would like to acknowledge the amazing work that they did. So in response to COVID, as Bill said before, we, uh, established the, the REAL Academy, the program was established. We established models for hybrid instruction. There was an interim remote period that we pivoted to. We pivoted back to, um, hybrid, to concurrent, and also in-person learning. Every one of those shifts required change and, um, dealing with fluxes and new skills and new challenges. Student services were identified and delivered at a point of need. I think Heather and her team performed some miracles. And I know that there's a lot of families who have expressed their gratitude for that. But the flexibility and responsiveness for the, for those students was really incredible. The essential learning competencies were written. We knew that in this model, we weren't going to be able to do everything that we would typically do in a normal school year. And so teachers were tasked with figuring out, what's essential? What do we focus on? So that as they set off into the school year, they knew where they were headed. It wasn't just a random trip and to see how far we get. Um, and they still are working, you know, they have, they did those for the second semester as well. So this has been ongoing work that they've done. In technology, we identified learning, uh, learning systems and acquired and implemented a range of different systems. Um, and Canvas was one of the big ones. And I like to point out that with the Canvas system, there was a team in the summer that was dedicated to, uh, researching different learning management systems. And we looked at over five different systems to consider a replacement for power school learning. We ended up deciding on Canvas and it coincided with the New Hampshire Department of Education partnership with the university system and creation of ILEARN New Hampshire. So it was a fortuitous outcome that we have benefited from greatly and Canvas is now paid for through 2025. The learning environments were flexed to accommodate safety. So we were able to provide social distancing and to set up, uh, workstations where students could feel safe. Um, we, I, we didn't get to get some pictures in our presentation, but, um, at Reed's Ferry School, we've seen some really interesting examples of flexible seating and giving students a lot of choice in where they are and how to make themselves feel safe and welcome and comfortable in their learning. UDL was leveraged to build engagement, foster participation, and mitigate stress. So we have been engaged in UDL for several years now, but I think we saw it put to its most extraordinary and everyday use. And I think it was a very big aha moment for a lot of teachers. Um, and then curriculum and instruction were redesigned across the board to, to sort of make things work in this new and strange environment.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. So those, um, this flexing into all these different strategies that Nancy just spoke about offers us now the opportunity to leverage these opportunities. So each of these departments and teams were doing all kinds of things to facilitate the learning for our students, to create a safe environment, to look at curriculum and instruction and assessment. And we want to capitalize on that convergence of these opportunities, right? We don't want to lose the momentum of some of the work that we've started. So we had begun strategic planning as a district team last fall. And at the same time, um, we moved into the COVID world and the pandemic. And that has been sort of front and center for all of us, but we never lost sight of this opportunity as a chance to take a look at strategically, moving forward. How do we take this convergence of opportunities and bring them together? Instead of having different things happening all over the place, different initiatives, different teams and departments doing things, how could we create a coherent system with these, leveraging these opportunities that we've had through the COVID experience? So that work that we had done with our district leadership team, we dusted off, took a look at again. We have had this experience where we've become partners with families in the community as they are educating their children with us in homes, uh, part of the time for all kids, for some children all the time in the REAL Academy, in that program. And we have this opportunity now to take what we've learned and form a system and a strategic plan moving forward based on these experiences. So Merrimack innovated in response to COVID. We received the attention of the DOE in New Hampshire. We are presenting at the New Hampshire School Administrators Association this week. We're working with ILEARN New Hampshire and we presented with demonstrated success this year as well around what we've done with the learning for our students, whether it's student services, our coordination of care and student supports and learning, what's happening at each of the building levels with principals and their building-level teams, what's happening at our strategic planning with our central office staff, the technology support that's required for us to be able to move forward in all of these landscapes. And they were different, right? We had kids fully remote, we had kids hybrid. We have had in special education, kids coming in fully at different times. We had to pivot, so there's been a lot of changes. So each of these things have led us to this place where we can leverage this opportunity that we've had. And instead of things being what sometimes can feel fractured or sort of happening in isolation of each other, this is an opportunity to zipper them up together and move forward, excuse me, move forward with this planning as a district, as a community, with our families, with our students, with our school board, with our central office, all of our buildings, working with different, um, uh, collaborations such as CAST for UDL, the university systems, we've started to partner with them. So we are taking the initiative here in Merrimack to leverage the opportunities that we've learned through the pandemic and look at them as opportunities rather than bad things that happen because this has been tough. But we are moving forward and we're going to leverage that opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name's Bill Wilmot. I'm an implementation specialist with CAST. I've had the honor of working with, uh, schools in Merrimack. This is my third year. We started in the middle school, in the upper elementary school. Uh, and then, uh, I think there was a meeting of the leadership team where they glowed about their experience and convinced all the other principals to join on. So we now have seven UDL teams, uh, all of the schools and a district-level team uh, that have been at this work, uh, two or three years to, uh, try to understand universal design for learning. The, the, I'll give you the thirty-second, uh, version of, of a two-day training. We know now that every learner is different. Uh, that's just, uh, any teacher could have told you that, uh, ten years ago, fifty years ago. Now we can see it in the brain. Um, and because of that, we have to plan differently. We have to share, uh, common goals, uh, but we have to find flexible ways to get there. We have to find a variety of different ways to get there and plan that students, plan so that students can make decisions, uh, along their way toward getting, uh, getting to a goal. So universal design for learning is a framework, uh, to support teachers to design those flexible pathways. And so that work was seeded, uh, across all of the schools and in the district, uh, before the pandemic. It, uh, really took hold, I think, when the pandemic started. And this quote, "UDL is happening" is a quote from Merrimack, uh, School District Principal, uh, who was seeing, uh, teachers, not just on the UDL teams, which are about five to ten, uh, teachers in each school, using UDL. Uh, August Academy, uh, two, year and a half ago, we did a large introduction, uh, to UDL to, to everyone. Shannon was there, to, to all of the educators in, uh, in the district. This principal was seeing, UDL is happening. Teachers were recognizing the need to be as flexible as possible in getting to the learning goals that they were, uh, pursuing. So I give you all of that background, uh, just to say, uh, to, to kind of set up the process that we are imagining, that working with the CC Networks and AIR are imagining, uh, going through to prepare us to, uh, to prepare, uh, the school district, uh, to open in September. So this design, try, reflect, uh, cycle that you see on the side of the slide is one that we include often, right? This process of improving your, uh, curriculum, improving your instructional design is a cyclical process. It, it always goes back on itself. You design something new, you try it out, you see what happens, you reflect on it, and you make more design changes. And it goes on and on. Life has given us no time for reflection in the last year. So we're envisioning this process as kind of an extended, uh, opportunity to reflect, to gather information on what has happened in the last year on the ground, from teachers, from students, from parents. And then most importantly, to kind of gather their perspectives on what this has been like. So that we can, uh, use kind of this, the, this, this foundation of innovation that we've been talking about, that we've been working on, that the school district has been working on, uh, over the last, uh, many years. But also recognize that there have been tremendous barriers, uh, over the past year to all students being successful. So to, to gather information directly from parents, students, and teachers to identify what those barriers are, identify what barriers may still be relevant even after we're back in school and may have been there before we, uh, before we were in a pandemic, that the pandemic has highlighted, and then develop a plan to, uh, address those barriers going forward. So I'm going to talk, I'm going to step away and then come back a little bit more and talk about that process, uh, in just a minute, but I'm handing it over.
Thank you, Bill. I just wanted to, um, start by giving a huge shout-out to, um, our students and staff. I, we would not be where we are at and students would not be being as successful as they are right now without teachers recognizing barriers and educators being innovative. And that's just really exciting to me. Um, you know, students are in classrooms behind plexiglass and then you have the, the, the masks that are, can sometimes, um, impact the student's ability to even access the information, but they have had to advocate for themselves and that's what's really nice. And so myself as a educational leader, there's things that I think about that I would not want to go back to because of the level of innovation that is, that I've seen and the amount of techno, the infusion of technology and resources that have risen students and teachers to another level, despite this really difficult time. So, and you know, and also a shout-out to the parents for their, the endurance that they've had. But there's good things that come through this. And I think that those of you who have known me for a while know that I love innovation and I, um, and I can be a big thinker sometimes. And one of the things that we have really worked very hard with our educators and, um, is to really think about, um, understanding by design whenever you take on a big project. We've talked a lot about, um, developing essential questions and starting really lofty, even though earlier you heard me talk about the concrete, but you've got to look at the end product, like what is it that you're really aiming for? And here tonight, we're presenting to you the idea, notion that, you know, that we're going to reimagine education, but what does that mean? So we, as a team, have developed, uh, four essential questions. One is how can we best solicit information from students, parents, and the community for their vision for the future of our educational systems? So again, um, this is not about the leadership team, um, you know, reinventing education. This is about parents, students, and the community talking about what, what are some ideas? What are some things that we're going to thrust forward and what are some things that we're going to change that we know maybe we've relied on as being somewhat too traditional and not, uh, contemporary enough? What are the essential components of students' educational successes? When reimagining education, what practices, procedures, and structures do we maintain and what do we change? I mean, I can think off the top of my head, sent, meant, many things that I would change as a result of seeing students work through, um, these barriers that they, that have been in place. To achieve a collaborative redesign, how do we shift the voice that defines our education system to our students and the stakeholders in a way from outside agencies? And then two statements, in order to contemporize our educational system, we must include student voice and choice, parent input, and community involvement. So you'll see with this reimagining that, um, down the road, um, with your blessings, we're going to really look to, for a board that will support maybe parent surveys and community surveys and student surveys so that this is, um, an authentic approach to reimagining and it meets, um, addresses the needs and the voices of those who are being educated. And in order to reimagine education, we must be innovative, creative, purposeful, and resourceful. So again, four, four essential questions that would help us leverage the opportunities to which, um, we heard Mrs. Barker, um, speak of. And then two statements that I think would be really givens for this initiative to go forward. Thank you.
There's Jessica, who's not with us today. Um, so just a little bit about the process. And to some degree, I'm representing my own experience that I, uh, work that I've done in human-centered design, uh, but also, uh, the process that CC Network has outlined, uh, for us. Uh, I'm just a guest in this process and, uh, thinking about how we, uh, integrate you. I'm just a guest in this process and thinking about how we integrate UDL throughout this, but have done similar work in other, other schools and districts. Really, the purpose of a human-centered design process is kind of what it sounds like. You're trying to put the people who are most impacted at the center of that design process. You try to understand their perspectives and their needs as a starting place and try to engage them throughout, so that they really understand kind of the ins and outs of a design and a plan going forward. So I can tell you, just having joined a few of these statewide calls with different districts, we are by far the most ambitious team. There are, you know, specific strategies that they had us identify that we wanted to look at, gathering data on, and thinking about how we would scale and continue these strategies. I think we had 11, 12. Some people were focused on one. So the goal of, kind of, as Heather was talking about, starting from that foundation of the strategic planning effort and kind of past innovation, and bringing all of that together, has been the center of the way that we've thought about how to approach this. So on the next slide, it starts to outline the process. So we've picked those 11 areas. Essentially, you can think of them as problems or opportunities that we want to investigate. We want to gather data about, some data we already have, some we want to gather from new sources. Kim mentioned some of those, surveying parents, students, teachers, focus groups with those parties. We really want to understand their perspectives and bring those stories to bear on the problem, so that we can really understand the problem. That's, to me, that's what analyze, analyzing the problem is. You're bringing diverse sets of data together and diverse perspectives together to really understand the problems and opportunities that you're trying to address. Then we're, the planning piece is, you're kind of developing the requirements for what a solution would look like. What would a good solution look like? Then you're designing solutions. At several points along this way, we'd be bringing those solutions back to people to gather feedback, to understand how those would play out in the schools, in the classrooms, in the parent communities. And then we're looking at those solutions. We're evaluating them against the criteria that we developed in the beginning. Do we think they're going to accomplish what we hope to accomplish? And as you see, this one is also a cyclical process. So all of that evaluation, all of that planning informs future questions that we would want to investigate. So that's some sense of what the process is like. Again, I think of it as, how do we put students at the center of planning for how we're going to reopen next year, right? This is an unprecedented time. It comes with unprecedented struggles, but it comes with unprecedented opportunities. And it's so, it's one that we don't want to pass without being very thoughtful in how we, how we approach it. And that's how we got here.
So it's great to be here tonight, speaking with this amazing group of people. So the next question is, what is next for us? And on this slide, you'll see that the first step is where we are today, just looking to you and bringing this to the community to develop commitment to this process. And then, as you heard, gathering the voices of all stakeholders. And I just, I just read this quote that Albert Einstein said, that if he had an hour left to solve a problem, he would spend 55 minutes looking at the problem and five minutes finding a solution. So I think that's really apropos to this situation where we really need to spend time listening, leveraging expertise from so many people who are with us, who, you know, among us, who have so much to offer, articulate a vision and strategic plan to establish goals and objectives, and develop and implement data systems to measure progress against goals. And that's, that's a big, very important piece of what we are seeking to do. So we are really committed, and I wanted to just read something that I wrote about this, because I feel really passionate about this project. Tonight, we presented about a very unique opportunity to engage in a process of reflection and discovery centering around community voice that will help lead our district into the future. The invitation to join other cohorts around the state in this process is really remarkable. It is the direct result of our partnership with this board and with this community. In other words, this opportunity reflects our history of excellence and innovation, as you've heard so much about tonight. We are known in the state as trailblazers and innovators for so many different initiatives. I feel it is important to emphasize that the honor of being invited to join the re-envisioning education in New Hampshire project really belongs to all of us as a collective, as we truly wouldn't be here if not for the forward-thinking commitment of our leaders on this board, our administrators, our teachers, and families. Reflection is an essential part of learning. It allows us to take what we have learned and to apply it across settings and to novel situations. It allows us to make meaning and shape our future with intention and purpose. Rather than reacting, reflective learners pause to deliberate, to collaborate, and to lift up all voices. We are looking forward to working with you, the board, and our community to take this opportunity to learn from and with one another and to re-envision our future together. And that is how we will close, and the next thing is really, what's next, is turning to you.
So I will just, before questions, I'll just say that really, this comes to the point where I've been before on other initiatives, and Kim has too, and so has Nancy, and it's been when we've come to the board and said, what we need is permission to move forward, and just to move forward, like we did with our mental health initiative, like we've done with our kindergarten planning, like we've done with technology. Just, we have a lot of these things that have come to us through grants and resources and collaboration with the DOE. At, the only commitment really is our time and our ability to do this and to move forward. So at that, I will open it up to any questions the board may have.
Lori?
So I have a few statements. So student learning is the fundamental purpose of our schools. So your mission is to join parents, students, teachers, staff, and community members to build a collaboration of learners, which I really think is very important, and I really appreciate. One of the things that I think we really need to talk about a lot is high-quality instruction being the single most factor in a student's achievement. And we need to continuously, always, look at our instruction, look at ways that we can personalize instruction, emphasizing inquiry, problem-solving, higher-order thinking. Teachers continuously improve instruction practice by using student data and student work, and then using feedback from a variety of sources. So I just want to just concentrate on the words "data-driven," "results-driven," and "evidence-based."
Andy?
So I'm, I'm really excited to see the concept of re-envision here, because if there's ever been a year where there are differences of opinions and viewpoints of things that have worked and not worked, this would be the year to do that. I think a lot of good things have come out, the ability for students to perform better remotely. I mean, there's some really good success there. We've picked up a lot. I think we've learned in the district some things that worked and some things that maybe didn't. We hear a lot from parents and other folks that other districts got it right. Well, I challenged, maybe in some areas they did, but I'm sure in other areas, they looked to places like Merrimack to say, how did you handle special education or the remote or things like that? So I think, to me, in looking, you're starting a conversation, you're starting a process. And I think with, with at least one new board member coming on, you know, in another couple of weeks, there's going to be a real big push to make sure that we talk to parents, we talk to students, we look at what's worked and not worked in other districts. The opportunity is significant, and I really would like, I mean, from my perspective, being here for a short period of time to come, is a board should support this. A board should not reach a conclusion too early to work with the stakeholders, to put the processes together, to get the input from students, from parents, from, from all the various sources, because we've got a really good opportunity to do this right and take as much input as we can. So don't rush it, but use the opportunity for what it's worth. And I'd like to thank you guys for what you've done to put this together so far.
Mark? Oh, Mark and then Jenna.
So I just want to comment and agree with Board Member Rothaus. One of the things that I want to point out, though, is that, as has been said before, we are often in the state leaders in a number of initiatives. And we elected several years ago to have an entire August Academy that preceded a school year entirely focused on inquiry as a bedrock of our principles moving forward. And we did that years ago, and we continue to support that to this day in all the practices that we've engaged in ever since that time. And I think any of the principals here can talk more astutely than I can about the data-driven work that they, that they do at the PLT level, and certainly at the administrative level. I don't think that there's a building team in the state of New Hampshire that has and uses data more effectively than the data that's used by our building-based teams. So I affirm what was said, and I would just also say that in many respects, we do that now. Having said we do that now, I want to just keep reminding everybody that when we say we do that now, it's often, you know, sometimes things are judged by the exceptions. And so, does it work perfectly all the time? No. Are there areas for improvement? I think you've heard everyone say tonight, yes. But the question is never, you know, have we, have we figured it out? The question is, are we continuing to try to figure it out and, and be in the, in a leadership role rather than in a, you know, in a, the caboose, being led around by others? So I affirm it, and I just would say that fortunately for Merrimack, we've often been in the case of, of leading some, being a bit ahead of the curve. And so, just wanted to add that.
Jenna?
So thank you all for coming tonight. It's just really exciting to hear you all talk. The passion that you speak about what you do actually just makes me so excited. And I love, I love, love, love that there is recognition that we cannot go back and un-experience what we've all been through together over this last year. There's no way to undo that in, in a positive sense, right? Like, we've all been through something that sort of bonded us together in its weird way. And we have unprecedented partnership with parents at this moment, and that is critical, I think, moving forward as a school district, to have that. I think parents now are understanding better than ever their students' needs, their strengths, their weaknesses, because they're living it every single day. And so the fact that you are going to turn then and say, "Help us understand," feels really validating, I think, to everyone after what we've been through this last year. They know, you know? Do they have every answer? They probably don't, you know? We have part of the answer, but they certainly have part of the answer. We, as a parent, have certainly have part of the answer. So I'm glad that you're going to take time and invest and talk to those people who have been in this, because one of my fears as a, as a parent is that we would go back to normal. And quite frankly, I've seen some things in my own children, and I know that other people, parents, as I talk to them, are saying the same thing. They are seeing things out of their kids that they've never seen before. Now, that's not to say there aren't parents having, you know, the worst year of their lives as far as school is concerned. That's certainly true, too. There are also other kids that are discovering all these real-world skills that I don't know that there was another way for them to develop. Did they need to develop right now? I don't know either. But to go back, I think, would be a disservice to so much of what they've all been through over the last year. And so I'm just grateful that there's a broad-scale recognition of that and that we are going to actively address that and move forward into something new, because I think this is such a critical point to do that, and I think you're going to get huge buy-in from everybody involved. So just thank you so much for what you're doing.
Andy, Shannon?
So I think a couple of points that you hit on, but I just want to kind of reinforce, and that is that we've been working with UDL for three years. So when the pandemic hit, the one thing you can say is, we were already looking at addressing individual learning styles, and that was something in practice already in our schools and really rolling out over a two-year period by the time the pandemic hit, and we're into year three. I think what, you know, I can also state, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I know, Bill, you're here, is that the state, maybe a year ago, recognized the value of UDL, and I believe they're even using the same firm that we've been with for three years, to talk about trying to create individual learning opportunities across the state. So, you know, I think Bill hit on it, and I think it's so important to validate and reinforce it from this part of the, you know, this is not our first UDL. I mean, it's a UDL-based conversation, but this is really just an application in a different environment of work that we've been doing for three years, and it's evolving and getting to this point. So this is the beginning. This is the middle. We're in the, we're in the meat of it as a district, and it's just a testament to the fact that as much as you want to, you know, you know, hear what you want to hear, that we've, we've been really working this way for a very long time. Inquiry's been, even before UDL, that's probably what brought CAST to the table, that inquiry was such an important part of what we wanted to improve upon, that this was a solution to the problem, and it came with good analysis. So we've been one step ahead of the curve in a number of areas for a number of years, and this is just another example of that. You know, we talk about social-emotional learning, and again, we were ahead of the curve by a number of years, to the point, you know, I think, Heather, you talked about we're being sought out by the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. Again, this mask, sorry. I talk all day without one on Zoom, so, but they're seeking us out because we are already in the trenches. And with social-emotional learning, organizations across the state, school districts, state agencies, and state organizations, the School Boards Association had been discussing that. We're one of the early adopters for having a care coordinator with Fern, and she's spoken at a number of panels. She's been at a number of panels where I've just been an attendee because it's what, you know, the state, people across the state realize is necessary. But this is not our first day at the rodeo. We're just in the trenches of the rodeo. We are always evolving, and we're always improving, and so this is why we keep getting presentations. But this is not reactionary, this is evolutionary. And we're going to continue to evolve because that's the way we do business. And I just, you know, as much as I've been, you know, it's an election season, you always hear the highs and the lows of everything, some of which has, is completely not accurate, some of it is, you know, where maybe we can do things a little differently. But honestly, I think we always try to do things a little differently. So we're always here for the feedback and the responsiveness, and so this is just a presentation to show that the work is always going to be done, and it's, we're doing so much to get to where we want to go. So, you know, the fact that, you know, Commissioner Edelblue did sit in on the Real Academy, because we are probably one of the first ones to have one, if not the first, to have an online academy that looks like it's going to be sustainable outside of a pandemic. So these are the things I think we need to reflect upon as we're coming to the, you know, end of a school year, oh, good lord, the school year, but coming to the end of a pandemic, thank God that we are coming to the end of a pandemic. But the next steps, I just think were more dynamic than we have ever been. But I think it has everything to do with the pan, it has everything to do with both the pandemic and the UDL work that we've been doing for three years already. So it just needs to be summed up for me, and I'm glad we did have this presentation tonight. But again, it shows how much work has already been done and how much work you're still planning to do. When it comes to stakeholders, you have it right on the money. I mean, parents cannot support their students if they don't know what the students are being asked to do. The students, you know, really just need to understand what the end game is, how do I learn best, how can you help me to learn at my best? And the teachers, that we're giving them the skills to be able to deliver all that and be that, that third peg. So good work, more work to do, always more work to do, but I just can't say thank you. But I just can't say thank you enough. So, but thanks.
Any other questions, comments? I also echo the thanks. I don't have a lot more to say other than what's already been said. But I would say that this definitely aligns with some of the things that we've been talking about and comments that we've had, you know, over the last months. And certainly, as a district, we've gotten better with agility. Everybody has. I mean, I think all of us individually is getting thrown into adversity as we have. There's definitely lessons learned and ways to come out better. So, I think springboarding from what we've learning, what we've learned, moving it into a vision for improved innovation, improved instruction, and a community-based product, I would say, is absolutely the way we want to go. So, thank you all tonight for this presentation and for all of the work and all you do every day. Okay, item number five, which is update regarding Governor's Order. Dr. McLaughlin?
So, there is, for as big an announcement as that was the other day, there's strikingly little to add at the moment. It's important for those listening to know that there was absolutely no consultation with any group that has responsibility for education in the state of New Hampshire. So, the School Boards Association, the teachers' unions, the Superintendent's Association, the Principals Association, this came really as a blindside. And I think that's very unfortunate, because too often, that has been the case in the state through this. And we've heard tonight the power of teamwork, and that includes everybody. So, it didn't happen. Just going to say it straight up. So, the good news, to the points that have been made before, is that last Tuesday, prior to the Governor's Order, we presented to the Board a plan for reentry for five days. And the only way that our plan deviated from the Governor's Order was in relation to our recommendation of a date of May 3rd to implement the plan. The Board elected to move 5 and 6 to April 19th and then agreed with our recommendation to keep 7 through 12 on May 3rd. So, the effect of the Governor's Order is to require us and all districts in the state to move much more quickly to get that all accomplished. And I will just say that regardless of what individuals who aren't charged with running the day-to-day operations of a school district might think, it is not a small feat to upend everything that we have planned for. We talk a lot about trying to plan carefully, plan intentionally, and with just a sudden announcement like that, it flies in the face of care and intent. We'll do it, but there are just way too many questions right now that have not been answered by either the Governor's Order or a conversation that the Commissioner had with school leaders, school and district leaders today. Just everything from the issues about whether Dr. Chan even has weighed in on the three-foot rule. Because if this ends up being the case, three feet is completely out the window. And the district can't take responsibility for something that it has already said it can't do. So, that's one. Another thing is, it's not clear as to the discretion that parents have. So, we have a plan that says that you can be full-time in, that you, so K-4 is remote or full-time. The 5 through 12, because of our technology abilities, we can actually run three systems, which we were not able to do before. So, we can be concurrent, full-in, or remote. What's not clear and was continued to not be answered today is whether parents can exercise their choice to remain hybrid, concurrent, or remote. And of course, that begs the question, what's the role of the school district? Does that mean that the school district is going to have to initiate truancy investigations for parents who elect to keep their children home for the duration of the school year? That's a pretty important question to answer. And I don't know the answer to that, and I think we should know the answer to that. I think frankly, we should have known the answer to that before the announcement was made. Nevertheless, we don't, and that's, those are just two of the questions that really are still out there. But the good news is Matt's, through Matt's efforts, all of the safety features that we outlined to you in our plan will be able to be met, we think, by April 19th. And John's work with ELCs and the constant need to be flexible in our delivery is going to stand us in good stead. So, we'll be able to do it. But we want to be completely clear that there are aspects of this that we don't have answers to, that we need answers to in order to do a credible job. So, it may be that we'll have to call a special meeting of the Board as we continue to find out information. But if I knew more, I'd tell you. But that's the reality as it is right now. So, the bottom line, the takeaway is, we'll be ready to go on April 19th, whether or not we have answers to questions. But the community should understand the implications, particularly around health and safety, which despite, you know, whatever, is not entirely over with yet. Much as we'd like it to be, it's not. So, anyway, that's really all I could share with you tonight. Happy to take whatever questions that you might have.
Questions? Andy?
So, I guess a point of order is, we made a decision in our last meeting to have two different dates for reentry. Now, based on the Governor's proclamation, executive order, we would be in violation of that order if we stuck to that policy, which means that we have a decision as of war to make whether we make a decision tonight to say that we will officially change our position to be back full-time by April 19th in the model we described. There's no, I don't think there's any question we're going to alter the model. It's just moving the timetable up. Whether the Board is, knowing what the Superintendent just gave us, do we stake that position tonight? Because to me, that's the real fundamental question that we have to leave here with.
Mark, did you have a?
Well, I would just say, as always, the Board, you know, can do exactly what it wants to do. But the Commissioner has made it clear that regardless of what individual boards have, you know, contrary to what some people think, not every district has figured out a plan to do this. We came to you quite early. I know we keep hearing other districts, other districts, but the fact is, and I can verify it today by conversations that I've had with the numbers, a lot haven't worked that out yet. So, we happened to. But it's been made very clear that the Governor's Order supersedes any Board action. And so, if the Board wants to take an action, it certainly can for the record. But we wouldn't, you could say, we make a decision tonight to not change, and we would have to change regardless. So, it almost is a moot point at this point.
True. Shannon?
I think the only things that we want to make sure that we have done is, you know, where we had ideas in place, you know, can waivers be given based on what the plan was to make sure that there would be full, you know, where parents would have a say in their child? Because I mean, when you think about what we've gone through the last how many years, they talked about parental controls involved in their children's education. So, if parents did want their children to be able to be home concurrently, does that meet the standards of the state? So, again, it's for us, I think it does, you know, warrant the question be asked, I guess. But I don't think that we as a Board have anything to say or do tonight, because at this point, we're just at the will of, you know, a couple of paragraphs that came out of Concord. But I absolutely, you know, the things that you were doing, I think, are, you know, really to accommodate the will of the families and the learners. And whatever we can do to get clarity on what latitude we have to enact that would be ideal. But you're right, you don't have it, and what you've been given.
So, what I would say is that the Commissioner was very clear today that waivers are going to be few and far between.
Oh, sure.
And so, I think it's as much a question for parents, frankly, to ask their representatives as it is the school district. The school district, by that I mean the Governor or the Commissioner, because the school district has a plan in place. Our doors are open as of April 19th. And what we've done is provide as many opportunities for, to accommodate the needs of parents. In fact, more opportunities than counterparts. And again, no critique, but it's often pointed out, you know, why isn't Merrimack doing what other people do? Well, you know, I'd say, in this particular case, we're offering more. The question is, will the state allow parents to do it? And I don't have an answer to that question right now. So, I think that it's as much, you know, questioning the Governor's Executive Order or the DOE as it is asking the school district, because we don't know. We don't know. We will certainly do our best to find out. But it's a strange time to think that, you know, in the live-free-or-die state, that choice seems to be, you know, choice on the one hand seems to be what everybody's talking about. And on the other hand, in this particular context, it seems to be less so.
There's no local control, from what I read. So, I guess that said is, you know, it's not saying, you know, I guess the question I have is, can we get clarity on what they would consider the standard? And then, again, you know, how quickly can this Board meet to reconvene on that? I think that's really it, because you don't have the answers tonight. You shouldn't, because honestly, the question just came at your head this late in the game. But with that, you know, how quickly can we get together and reconvene that?
I see John.
I would just say, I was part of the call today with the Commissioner. And even to the point, the frequently asked questions aren't released yet. I mean, they came in, and he showed them and said, "I need to go back and work on these some more." And I'm being very honest, because that's what the, and there was hundreds of people on there. So, if I don't say it, someone else will. And he said, "They're not ready for primetime yet, the questions." So, as of right now, even the frequently asked questions, that included Shannon, many of your questions you just had, I saw them, aren't answered yet to a point of clarity where we have direction on what to do next. So, until we get those questions released from the DOE, we are in awaiting mode right now. But we can plan as we have. We have a great plan in place. We just have to move it up for our, you know, our 7, 8, and then our high school, you know, and do that. And as Mark said, I'll reiterate it. We said it before. Our doors are open to learning, and we'll be available five days a week. And that's, from what I can tell right now, the order says you need to do. And beyond that, some of the detail, we don't know yet, because we don't have those questions.
So, just to be clear, so what we're seeing tonight is that we understand the Governor has the order. We've moved all of our plans, as we originally presented last week, to reopen on the 19th. But we're now in a holding pattern pending some nuances as to what that might mean for students that maybe want to be full-remote, kind of.
So, let me, yes, let me just clarify, if I could, what I term a holding pattern. We're not, the district is not in a holding pattern at all in terms of implementing the plan as we presented it to the Board and the Board approved. We also recognize we're ready to go on April 19th. I think the holding pattern has more to do with parent inquiries. Right now, we have, as part of our plan, full-in. We're open, come. The beauty of the plan, that I think several Board members pointed out, is that it allows flexibility for people to elect, because contrary to what some people say, not everybody wants to come back full-time. And so, we want to be able to provide that option. That's concurrent learning. And then, we have the Real Academy, which is entirely separate. And so, the Governor's Order seems to suggest that those who elect remote can do it. The question really, I think, is whether we are allowed to provide the concurrent part of our plan. Meaning, can people elect to stay home and zoom, you know, to zoom in using the technology that we spent a lot of our grant money for so that we could do exactly what we've been doing and what we provided us the opportunity to have our plan implemented the way we presented it? That's the part that's not clear. And what I can only guess is that, you know, to John's point, certain parts of this weren't completely thought through. And are you really going to tell a parent in the state of New Hampshire, with, you know, cases currently on the rise in the state of New Hampshire? I mean, that's not me making it up. Look at the union leader, daily count. We've jumped 20 cases in a couple of days. And with variants and so on, are you going to tell a parent that they don't, can't elect the option that we provided? That's the, so that's the holding pattern part. We're going to proceed as if that's still in place. And if we find out from the DOE or the Governor that that part of our plan can't be implemented guaranteed, we will communicate that to the Board and to the community as quickly as we can. If the Board is struggling with, do we take the position? I'm assuming that I understand your position is to do what you asked us to do last week, which is to implement the plan that you approved and that you don't have any discretion over the date. So, unless you're prepared to tell me you don't want us to do the concurrent part, we're going to operate as if that's what we're going to do and wait to be told otherwise by the state.
I mean, that's what makes the most sense to me, is we're moving forward with our plan. It's going, executing it earlier on the 19th. And as more information becomes available, we'll let the public and our families know.
Yep.
Jenna, and then Andy.
I just want to say one last thing, just for crystal, crystal clarity to everybody. There will still be a full-remote option for families who choose that option.
There always was, yes.
Yes, there always was, but it will continue, and even the Governor said that can continue.
Correct.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, he was, I mean, the order definitely said remote could continue.
Yep.
Full-remote, to me, that way anyways. Okay, Andy?
So, just another comment to follow on Jenna's a little bit. So, we know that at the high school, there's a different sort of course curriculum if you're a real student versus if you're hybrid. There are certain classes that you can only do hybrid that you can't do real, right? It feels like there are now two fully-remote paths potentially available to a student. There is the real program that they've been in. Or, if they're currently a hybrid student, they could choose to zoom in five days a week if they wanted to, to be able to retain their current curriculum that they've got. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, Anne. Yes, but I want to be, I just want to, because language matters. So, the fully-remote students who elected fully-remote, that's part of the Real Academy, right? The phenomenon that you're describing would be students who are part of concurrent learning, who formally would be Cohort A, Cohort B, I'm home two days, I'm zooming two days. That was a big innovation that the Board asked for so that we could get more contact time for second semester. So, that's how we started second semester. So, the answer is, you could, our plan, our current plan, the Board approved, is you could be a kind of a hybrid student. But if you elected on any given day to be home, you wouldn't be part of the Real Academy. You would be part of just your class, your concurrent learning class. And you could just elect to come to school and learn in person or stay home and learn remotely, but zoom in with your class, right? So, that is the current plan option that we presented and the Board approved. The question again is, will that component of the plan be allowed in the executive order? And that's the question that we don't have an answer to.
Right, I understand. But I mean, based on the way that we built the plan, that's, would be a feasible outcome. What we don't know is whether it passes the muster of the executive order, and that's what you're waiting for.
That's correct. Okay, that's correct.
So, the reason I'm sticking about this point is there are, there are many people that read the executive orders saying, "The executive order supersedes anything a district might have done." a district might have done. That on April 19th, you come back unless you get a waiver full time. That's the way some people read it. There are many that says, well, Merrimack said May 3rd for the older grades and May 19th for the five and six. I think that if we are going to, even with the unanswered questions, have the intent of going everybody back in that model on the 19th, we need to at least make that statement other than just in passing. Because there are parents that are going to say, on the 19th, I'm going to send my student back. Maybe I'll have questions about what it looks like, but that's the goal, that's the new bogey of this district, is to go back on the 19th. And I think, we at least need to put that stake into the ground so that there, there aren't people saying, well, this district can just go. And they'll go on the 3rd and look for a waiver because I'm not sure that that's the intent of us looking for a waiver at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, Dr. McLaughlin, I think if you could send an email to the families, district wide, just kind of rehashing what we've just discussed tonight as it relates to the executive order. And that we'll be forthcoming with more information so that all families, A, understand that we are coming back on April 19th and that's crystal clear and in all of their inboxes and whatnot. And then that we will keep them informed to possibly have an emergency school board meeting as more information becomes available. Would be, I think, really helpful as well as some kind of a notice on our website.
Yep. Absolutely. You know, I, I wouldn't have done that until, you know, we had a conversation tonight. But yeah, absolutely. That, that'll be first thing tomorrow. Yep, exactly as you said.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. That is number six, which is the donation of masks from Walmart. Dr. McLaughlin.
So at, at our last meeting, we talked about partners, community partners and corporate partners who've helped. And so since our last meeting, we've had yet another donation of, I believe this was, Matt, 40,000, 40,000 masks from Walmart. And they were delivered in pallets to us the other day. And so we are immensely grateful to our, our friends at Walmart for making that donation and for allowing us now to provide the opportunity for all of our students and staff who, who want to take advantage of masks that we provide to do so right through the end of the school year and to the point where they could even sub them out and so on.
Yep.
So, so we're really grateful and we just didn't want to take advantage of a donation like that without just acknowledging it and letting the board and the community know about our good partners at, at Walmart. So.
Questions there? No? Or Andy?
We, this isn't acceptance of gifts or this is just, we, a matter of course, we're just accepting.
It's just, it's just an acknowledgement of their generosity.
That's right.
Yep.
I just wondered if it meet, if it meets the qualifications or we would need a public hearing if it's over 7,000.
It's a, it's a donation of materials
Okay.
Which we can accept.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Without a board meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Quite frankly, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep, so, thank you.
Yep. Item number seven, district travel policy. So when we met last week, we had to table this to this week as we had, I think, first of all, it was pretty late and we were definitely all getting tired. And the idea was to come back and further discuss this and kind of land on the go forward on policy. I think Andy's handing something down. So Andy, I think I'll let you speak first on this.
So we went around and around and around the last meeting about the way we wanted, is it a policy? Is it a dessert topping? Is it a guidance? I mean, we, I mean, I think we were all getting a little tired by the end of that particular meeting. But I think taking a step back to look at, should it be a policy? Should it be guidelines? I'm feeling more and more personally that guidelines are more appropriate than policy simply because they're changing. They're changing very frequently. Lori was offered up an example of what Nashwood sent for a letter that's, that's guidance, that's a guideline for the, for their district for travel. But the interesting part is, is that essentially it refers to a pretty concise DHHS page. Now, let's take a step back. Our policy pointed to a DHHS page, which was fairly broad. It defined things like what, what, you know, what essential travel was and for employees of different things like that. And travel was just one of the dimensions of it. DHHS has a very concise, and what I handed out to the board is the two-page version of it, printed on both sides to optimize paper, of what the current travel guidance is from the DHHS, which they update. It's, it's what I consider a live document. And if you compare it to what, and I didn't make copies for others, but essentially the Nashua letter duplicates, for the most part, what is in this document. Which means that if we decided to follow Nashua's lead into a guidance letter, we would have to update that whenever DHHS did because it talks about days around quarantine, how many days to test. And we know that's a bit of a moving target. So my position coming into tonight is sort of a stake in the ground is this very specific travel guidance, which seems to match most everything we've talked about in terms of if you're vaccinated, it talks about travel locations and stuff, falls into DHHS. Now, is, it is not have strict requirements. These are more guidelines and guidance. But as we go in through the year, things are going to evolve and change. So it's going to, things are going to become more of a guideline. So my personal position, and I'll stop talking in about six seconds, is that we, from a guidance perspective, defer to this document, which I can provide the link to, to, to be able to describe what parents and teachers should keep in mind when they travel in terms of what's expected. So that's my two cents.
Questions, comments? Lori?
I agree with Andy.
I also agree with Andy.
I agree with Andy.
Can I?
Yep, Mark?
So I just, I am as eager as all of you to put this away. I just wanted to say again, the, the, so what that, just understanding what that means, the current CDC guidance for people, the current CDC guidance is that if there are no limitations or restrictions on traveling domestically, right? That's the current CDC guidance. So for the people who have, you know, the exemptions and the exceptions, you know, because of vaccination or COVID within 90 days, but, but, but that not everybody falls into that category. So the CDC guidance doesn't make a distinction. So I just, that's, that's, I mean, I don't, I don't, and that's what we say in our district proposed travel policy, is that, you know, now that we're bringing more people back and cases are rising for the time being, and there'll be, you know, no chance of maintaining three feet for the most part, that that's a risky thing to do from the perspective of the very thing that we want, which is to maintain consistency in our, for students and staff. So by consistency, I mean, I am desperately trying to not have to close a school. And it wouldn't be just us, we'd be required to do so if we couldn't do the contact tracing, all that stuff we said last week. So I just want to be clear that if that's, and it's perfectly reasonable to do, many places have done it. But as I said last week, I just want the board to completely understand the implication of that. That's all.
Andy?
So I get it. I, and, and the state of New Hampshire is different than the CDC. But part of the problem is you have to look at the ballpark you're playing in, right? We, we are going to school in the state of New Hampshire. We have districts around us that started off with a policy or guideline similar to, similar to Merrimack where you outline New England states as the guidelines. And actually, some of those districts didn't, didn't even talk about the, the essential travel definition, right? We were one of the few that actually tried to do that. But the concern I've got is as more and more districts are updating their travel guidelines, they're adhering more to what DHHS has. There are some that have old guidelines that have been around for a few months that still talk about New England states. But any district that has done any recent revamp is following the state guidelines where they're talking just general, right? So I, I mean, I understand the concern, but also given the fact we're in a, in an area in a state where we would be the outlier as far as being more restrictive, even though we're in school, I think that while I understand the risk, I'm not sure that we can do that or should do that. I mean, it's, I, I'm really, I'm really torn here because I want to be able to understand the safety and I understand, Mark, what you're saying. But I don't know that we have a choice or, or definitely from what I've heard from parents is, from those that have reached out to me, is that it needs to be consistent. That's the main thing is they're looking for consistency. And so from my perspective, that's, that's the reason I proposed it. And again, I have no kids in school and I'm not a teacher. So I don't have a skin in the game, just trying to represent what I've heard.
Any other comments or motions? Jenna?
I will make a motion that we, I'm not sure how to word this, that we, wasn't the legal, wasn't the legal advice that we would have to disband our policy in order to defer to the state?
CDC.
The
I'm not sure how to word it, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's technically, it's, so our legal advice was you shouldn't have a policy that recommends. We currently have a policy that requires. So
Okay.
The typical practice would be for us to remove the current travel policy and replace it with whatever motion you're going to make. We can, we don't need to do that formality tonight. Whatever you move
Okay.
If it's approved by the board, will become the thing. And then at the next meeting, we can remove the old travel policy as a, as a matter of record.
I see what you're saying. Okay. So then I, I'm
Real quick, didn't we talk about actually just making the policy to refer to the DHHS guidelines just because our families were used to looking to that for the current update?
Yeah, and that's why I asked because I thought then the legal opinion was there was no reason to have a policy that points to a, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah. So actually, so I mean, I don't know what your motion is going to be, but the motion really could just, can I tell you what I?
Well, no, I, I have, I'll tell you what my motion's going to be.
Yeah, okay.
How about that? My motion's going to be that we accept, we, that the Merrimack School District follows the New Hampshire COVID-19 travel guidance as outlined on this document.
Okay.
Second? Made by Jenna, second by Lori.
So, so then what I would ask then is that then after this, then you just make a motion to rescind the current, this current policy then?
Okay.
And then just replace it with the, with the guidance that you just agreed to.
And then where would that be replaced? Just as a document in our policies?
Yeah, we would just, it would just be for the record, it would reflect that there was a policy called X that was rescinded on this date. And, and then the new guidance would, that's more of a matter of record. But we could, we could then say in our announcement to the community that the policy that had been operational up until, you know, 8:30 on four, five is now gone and it's replaced by what you all just agreed to. So part of it is a matter of record and part of it is just clarification to say, we actually don't have that policy anymore. The board just agreed to remove it.
Okay. Anyone want to speak to it? Shannon?
I just want us, as we make a decision, to hold ourselves to the, because I, I feel the votes are there. So I'm just going to say that this, this is pretty much a done deal. So, that we need to hold to being responsible for whatever the outcome is. I think that at the end of the day, we're making a decision here. And, you know, what's been asked of us is to do what we can to keep the schools open and minimize transmission. We are already facing that we're not going to have even a three-foot distance. We have recognized that our, you know, and it's going to be on our ballot next week, that our ventilation is not up to current modern standard. And that I think we're just putting a lot of, a lot of eggs in one basket and hoping that they won't crack. So, so with that, I just want us as a board to own this decision and own the responsibility for it. Because so often when we vote, the operational, you know, it's operationalized by administration and it becomes their problem. But I want it to be brought back, you know, I would like updates on this at meetings. If it's brought back to the board, we had to close this school and da, 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 da. We had these transmissions. Yeah, I want us to really stay on top of this because this is something that we're taking risk on behalf of our administration because they're giving us guidance counter to what we're, we're doing here. So I think we need to own it. So as I said, I think the votes are here, but I think that we also need to own what we're doing. So, and the risks that we're taking. And because they are risks. They're absolutely risks. And I still have the floor, right?
Yeah, you do, sorry.
Okay, good. So, so with that, you know, I, I would like us to make sure that we're backing up administration if things don't go the way we hoped. Because they're going to have, they're going to take the calls where not as much. And now I yield the floor.
I see Andy and then Jenna.
So my only comment is if this particular policy, it says travelers, visitors and residents of New Hampshire need to self-quarantine for dead days after last day of any international travel or travel to Canada or cruise ship. It doesn't call out domestic, but it does talk about these other ones that says need to self-quarantine. The question really becomes is, is New England more of a hotbed or less of a hotbed than anywhere else in the country? And that's debatable based on the day of the week that you talk and the current trend. I'm not sure that, that New England is always better than any other parts of the country. So I've always questioned the New England versus the rest of the country model anyway because it's a moving target, right? It's, I think at the time it was put together, New England had its act together better than other parts of the country. But that fluctuates a lot. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned with us locking it in. And again, I mean, I made this proposal so it could be a, a growth path. I understand what Mark's saying, but it's, that's it.
Mark?
So Andy, you, you raise an interesting question. And what you're really talking about is the arbitrary nature of some of this. And this is what we've been dealing with all year, you know? Is it six feet or is it three feet? Nothing's changed. I mean, the virus is what the virus is. And suddenly now we can seem to accommodate three feet or maybe just no feet. And, you know, New England, I don't know. I mean, I think that was an initial effort to make it seem more palatable to people that they could at least go to Connecticut. But it's all sort of arbitrary. And I completely understand that things are getting better. I have no interest to prevent good things from happening. But as I pointed out at the last meeting, you know, we have one job and that is to keep schools open. And we can't keep schools open under the current conditions, under any condition. You know, it's not our call because when we report cases, we're advised by DHHS about what to do. So I'm telling you from an operational perspective, it's a kind of funny place to be. We're told, three feet's fine or maybe not, and, you know, bring people back. But then when we have to report and say we can't contact trace because we don't know who passed who in the hall because everybody's back, then the, we're not, we're not choosing to quarantine. We have to. And that could result in the very thing that we have said we don't want, which is more, you know, more closures of classrooms or grade levels or, you know, God forbid, buildings for a period of time. So again, I'm not, I, as I often, always say, I will do the will of the board. I just think it's my job to let the board understand what the implications are. You know, I'm not making it up. I mean, that's, that's the implication. And I think if I just didn't say it and then something happened, I think it might be like, well, I wish you had told us. So I'm, I'm trying to just tell you now. But we'll do whatever you want.
Madam Chair, can we call the question?
I, Jenna had her hand up. Did you have anything else, Jenna?
I mean, yes, I, I would, Lori, if you don't mind.
After you, then we'll call the question.
Yeah.
You had your hand up before she called the questions.
So Shannon, in response to you, I'm, I'm certainly, obviously, if we, if we make this decision, be accountable. However, the accountability, I mean, if, if we end up going remote because of cases, are we going to directly trace that all back to whether it's travel? You know what I'm saying? Because in order for us to be held accountable to this particular moment, we would have to know whether those COVID cases came from travel or not. And I don't know that that's how much contact tracing we do or that's what you do. Because there's COVID happening right now, you know, and it's just serendipitous maybe that it doesn't end up shutting our buildings down because, you know, it doesn't hit the right place or the right, whatever. You know, but it could happen at Reed's Ferry or Master Cola Elementary right now because they are full in. That, that could That, that could happen, you know what I'm saying? So, yes, we're accountable. But they're also, we cannot continue to defer to DHHS, and we got, we should, we need to follow the guidelines, we need to follow the guidelines, we need to follow the guidelines. And then they give us the guidelines and we say, actually, hold on a second. We know you're epidemiologists, but we are going to actually make our own extra guidelines. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, yes, we have a responsibility, but yet at the same time, we are not the experts in infectious disease. And all we can do is follow guidelines that are given to us by the people who are experts. And that's, I guess, I'll stop there.
All right. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, one, the motion carries, four, one, zero. All right.
And then send it just a motion to rescind the current policy.
And then can we also take a motion to, would someone give me a motion to rescind the current policy, Lori?
I make a motion to rescind the current travel policy.
Do I have a second? Jenna, all those, anyone wanna speak to it? Didn't think so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, one, that motion carries, four, one, zero. Thanks, Mark. All right, moving on to number eight, that is the review of the 2021 to 2022 school calendar options.
So, you have, in front of you tonight, three broad choices for the 2021, 2022 school calendar. And when I say broad choices, I mean, you know, we can, you know, make a billion, you know, individual changes here. But in broad terms, you've got, I presented you with three options tonight. So, the first option, at the top right of your packet, says August Academy. So, the August Academy version is the one most like what we've been doing in recent years. And it's, as an aside, it's the one that was supported by the public in the survey. And that would be that on Monday, August 30th, teachers would come back to school. That's a contractual day for teachers to work in their classrooms and just, just do that. Then the 31st, the first, and the second of September would be what's, we've been calling August Academy, or this would be August and September Academy, and that's, that's typically the professional development that we have put forth over the last many years. That has been a, you know, a solid three days of really good professional development, as opposed to scattershot throughout the year. And then on Friday, September 3rd would be staff meetings and so on. Then the following Monday is Labor Day, that's where you see that Xed out. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday, that's the 7th and the 8th of September, I have RH there. You recall that we got a, a member of the public who reminded us that Rosh Hashanah, a very important day, is, is on September 7th and 8th. And it's a very high holy day for our Jewish families. And the request was that it would be a real challenge. We always acknowledge and observe people who request days off for holy days. But this is, coincides with the start of school, and so that would be particularly difficult. So, this version, it takes off 7th and 8th, just how it falls this year. So, in this version, September 9th would be the first day of school. And then you see, we would have par, per the survey that we got, we'd have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off plus Thanksgiving. We'd have the December break, as noted, Martin Luther King on the 17th of January. February break, which is this year really a March break, except for the last day of the month. Then April break, and then the last day of school in this calendar would be June 21st, with makeup days going to the 28th. So, there's that. The second version that you have before you, in the upper right-hand corner, says no August Academy. And so you see that on Monday and Tuesday, in August, the last two days of August, would be teacher prep days. So, there would be the contractual day where teachers get to work. And then the Tuesday would be staff meetings. And then it would be followed by the first day of school on September 1st. Go to school Thursday and Friday. So have three days that week. Monday is Labor Day. Then have Tuesday and Wednesday of the following week off for students, but teacher workshops in place. Then in this one, because there would need to be three teacher workshops, we've put the teacher workshop, the third teacher workshop, on the 18th of October. And this is what I mean when I say, we could have literally 180 iterations of this, that could be anywhere. But we thought that it would be helpful to have professional development, the last part of, you know, professional development to be in the early part of the year, so that we could gain whatever benefit we're gonna get from professional development. Oftentimes, professional development sometimes goes as late as, you know, it has been in the past, April. And, you know, most of the year is done at that point, so we just thought it would be better to have it in October. In any event, everything else stays largely the same. And the last day of school in this example would be June 17th, with the last day of school being the 24th of June, with makeup days, if necessary. But the scheduled last day of school would be June 17th. The third option would, we call it the Tuesday after Labor Day option. This one would be that we would have the teacher prep day be the last day in August. Teacher workshop, one teacher workshop day would be Wednesday, followed by BD would be a building day, that's the staff meetings. And then in this one, just for the sake of options, this would be the one where we would not observe the high holy day. And the first day of school would be the 7th of September. Then in this version, we would have the two remaining teacher workshop days be in October. So, in the previous version, there was one workshop day in October on the 18th, this would be the 18th and the 19th. So they'd be scheduled, you know, back to back, so that we, because we've seen some benefit in really having some consolidated time with teachers. But again, that could break, and that could be a day in October and a day in, in March. You wouldn't necessarily want to put another workshop day in November, which is already a broken up day, a month, or December, which is, it certainly could be January. I would not recommend February for kind of the same reasons, so January and February. But in any event, this is the proposal that we have. And this, we're back to the 21st, would be the last day of school. So, tried to provide the board with some options and happy to answer questions that you might have.
Shannon, and then Lori.
So the only question I have is on option two, where there's no August Academy and school would start before Labor Day. I'm assuming, you know, or has the MTA and MESSA been consulted, because it's not in line with the, the collective bargaining agreements in place? And have you had any feedback?
So, I, so the answer to your question is, we wanted to propose this to the-
I think your mic's off.
Okay. Sorry. So, I believe that we, I have to, well, I've checked this with Melissa, but I, I could check this again. But the MTA agreement states that we can't start sooner than the Monday before Labor Day. But we could start the Monday before Labor Day. The, I believe what the agreement is, if, if some districts start, you know, like the third week in August, our agreement would preclude us from being able to do that. But we could, so I think it stipulates we can start no earlier than the first, the Monday before Labor Day. So, which this is.
Okay.
Lori?
So, I really appreciate all the effort to try to accommodate everyone, giving us a lot of options. Personally, I like the second option, because I, I do think that recognizing the, the holy days on the 7th and 8th, but getting students in on September 1st and 2nd, then moving your professional development to the, keeping it in the beginning of the year, and then having the final day on the 18th. Hopefully, school will get out the 17th, if there's no snow, or we're innovative and we come up with some creative ideas. So it still gets out at the 17th, that would be great. So, I'm, I think the second option is the one that I'm in favor of.
Andy?
The only comment I'll make is that the second option means that we would be taking a position that goes against the parent survey. Because remember, the parent survey said, you support starting school after Labor Day? And wasn't it like 80% said they wanted to start after Labor Day? So, you've got sort of a battling position as to where the accommodation is gonna be. Because if you're gonna start ahead, it's sort of the way Merrimack used to be years ago, you know, when we started earlier, as opposed to after Labor Day. So, it's, I'm, I'm really at a loss as to what the right answer is here, because it's, there's no clear cut in my mind.
Any other questions? I mean, I would say from, you know, my perspective is, you know, I like the idea that we have the time all bunched in at the beginning for our teachers to prepare for the year. Whereas the second option is a, they'd go for two days, and then they would have like a five-day Labor Day weekend, and then go back. I mean, if I, as a parent, I would think if they just hold through, then they would start later. And it's two days later in the spring. But the one thing that I think really helps with that is the fact that we are looking at new snow day policies, which will make it less likely that we'll have extra, it'll minimize the extra days or the possibility of that date getting pushed out. So, at this point, I'm more in favor of the first option, because it still respects that holy day, but it also extends the summer for families, rather than kind of a start-stop.
The first option, Cindy, starts school on the 7th. So those are the days that would be-
No, the first, the first option starts on the 9th.
Oh, on the 9th.
On the 9th, so they would just go through the Labor Day and then just start fresh that Thursday and Friday, and then go through, rather than starting for two days before Labor Day, and then having this extended break, and then it still gives the teachers, still gives the teachers that concentrated time to do August Academy, to prepare for the year.
Cindy, could I just make one point? On the second option, it would actually be, on the second option, the no August Academy option, it would be actually school three days. It'd be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Lori?
So my point, you know, as an educator, teachers want to get in school and get started in September. There's a lot of anxiety around starting school. So, you know, that, they, it's, it summers over, they want to get in school. So to be able to come to school, get a few days, get their classrooms ready, and then, you know, still have that professional development to look forward to. Because the most important thing is, you know, it's like Sunday night anxiety before you go to work. And getting teachers back to school in the buildings, get schools open. I understand what Andy said about the parent survey, but I don't think the parents saw the two religious holidays right there. And, and that's what we are addressing, because we, we understood what they said, but we're taking into consideration, which I think is, is our job as board members.
I also think, you know, historically, a number of our parents and have never seen us start before Labor Day. So, it's likely that some already have made plans before that date, because at least in all the years I've been in the district, we've never done that. Doesn't mean we can't, it's just a consideration that I wanted to bring up.
I was just wondering if there's, there's been a consideration. I know that we have a number of students, we may even have some staff that have, that, you know, have this as their holiday. But if we didn't have students in session, but, you know, we gave, any staff that would have had a religious holiday, they could take us, you know, for, for that purpose anyway. So, having those days be functional, but just not instructional, could that be considered? So that way we have, again, so instead of 30th and 31st, you move that to the, to two days after Labor Day. And that way, they can, you know, do their August Academy, but of course, they would get an excused absence if they were celebrating their faith.
So I, I wanna obviously be sure I understand, so you're working off of which?
I'm working off the front document, the first one, the one with Rosh Hashanah identified.
Yep.
So if Rosh Hashanah, there wasn't, there weren't instructional days, but they were preparation days. So that there wouldn't be instruct, the, the students wouldn't, and we would also, of course, give an excused absence to any staff that would be practicing the faith.
So-
I'm thinking like setting up classroom stuff, where they can make it a flex day or something. You know what I'm saying?
Yep, so I guess I'm wondering whether that's a little bit what is the second option, because those would definitely not be instructional days, and to the point that you just made, unless I'm misunderstanding you, if a teacher were wanting to observe Rosh Hashanah on either the 7th or the 8th, they could do that. Yeah, so that's, so that is kind of like the second option.
Right, but the thing is, I would, the, the point I was making was, for the front page, is that they would start classes the 9th, so students wouldn't go back until the 9th. So it's kind of like a combination of the two, really.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
But yeah, just so that we don't, again, have it so far out, but you're right, the parent surveyed. I'm not saying that, you know, they should necessarily book their vacation, because we always advise that you wait for the calendar to be published before you book your vacation, because again, you have, you know, the job is to educate. But, but with that, if there's a way of doing that, maybe it's a hybrid of the two.
So are you saying move the, like, 30th and 31st to the-
Yeah, to the two days of Rosh Hashanah, and of course, any staff that would have, have, would recognize that their faith on those days would be excused.
So it's, nobody would come back on the 30th and 31st, but-
They would come back on the, right, the first.
On the first, and then the other two workshop days would be on the sixth, or the 7th and 8th.
Yeah, because I, you know, I'm, the one thing I have to say with the option three, I just was not a fan of throwing it into the middle of October either. I mean, that concentrated time, and, and so much of that time is, you know, you know, preparing for that first day of school, but it's also getting your classroom set up for success. And God only knows what that's gonna look like in the fall, because it's probably set up very differently for success next fall than it is right now. But giving that time to do that, and of course, if they're celebrating their faith, then say, you know, come in on a flex, call those, those two days like flex days, if you're not gonna be able to be here for those, those days of your faith.
Andy, and then-
So, I'm sitting here, I should have done this ahead of time, but I'm looking at various school calendars that have been published for 21, 22. So far, I haven't found a district that is taking Rosh Hashanah into account. Most of the recommended from the DOE, the school calendar, doesn't take into account. A couple of districts that I've looked at, just in a couple of minutes, don't. So, I know we've had this request, but my question is, are we taking an approach that is different than everybody else, and therefore, we're gonna run into issues, you know, with things like the vocational things and stuff like that? Just something I wanted to sort of throw at.
Jenna?
Well, along those lines, I'm, I mean, there are other faiths that have high holy days that fall on other months, you know, like, you know, I think Ramadan starts April 13th this year, you know, and so are we gonna also look to, I mean, to me, like, you have to be really careful, because it becomes a slippery slope, right? I mean, that, that's just where my head goes there.
Shannon and Lori?
I, just to respond to that, I think the, the imperative part is these, again, this is their re-entry into a normal school life after a long period of time. This is the first time in my 12, or my 11 years on the board, we've ever had this conflict of schedule, ever.
Right, that's the difference.
And Lori?
And that's exactly what I was gonna say. So, I understand, but most school districts start in August. And so, we don't start until after Labor Day, so that's why we're in the jam. But I do have an appreciation for- But I do have an appreciation for, you know, CTE programs. So if school, you know, if, um, you know, Milford or Nashua is starting in August and our kids aren't starting till the ninth, they're going to miss all that day, all those days of instruction in those CTE programs. That's their introduction too. So I do think, you know, I, I agree with what Shannon just said. You know, like thi- this is different because it is so important and it got brought to our attention and it's the first day back to school. So again, I, I, I'm going to say I, I like the second option the best for me.
And Mark, can you speak to the CTE? How does that impact our students?
Yeah, uh, well, Matt, I would, I, I don't, I mean, there's a little bit of a startup time there. I mean, I don't think that.
It's not right away.
It's not immediate. I mean, in other words, I don't, I don't think that we're talking about a significant disruption in the CTE world. We've always been, you know, starting after Labor Day and other districts always start, are often start before. This is, you know, some later than it normally has been, but it, it's not like outrageously later. We, well, I mean, it would be the, I mean, so we would start, typically, we'd start on the seventh, right? That's when we would typically start. So this is a, a matter of, of two days difference. And, uh, we've never heard of the CTE programs, uh, you know, our students being disadvantaged, um, in those contexts. And so I don't perceive that to be an issue, that particular question to be an issue.
My next comment then is, like Lori, I, I do lean towards the second option as well. I do understand the concern about the survey. But is the survey in part because people really like having that last long weekend of summer? But by having the teacher workshop days, we've still kind of given it to them because we've just given it to them in a different way, right? So instead of getting, you know, more time in front of that weekend, they actually still get a five, you know, they're going to have a five-day weekend. They just get it in a different, on the other end. Do you know what I'm saying? As a teacher, there's a lot of benefit of having those three days of getting everybody into and getting the routine or whatever. And then, you know, when they come back on the ninth, they can hit the ground running with, okay, we've, we've had three days to establish our routines. We're jumping into learning, starting, you know, not that there isn't learning on the first three days, but, you know, especially with little kids, there's a lot of routine happening and this is how things run and whatever, right? And then the ninth, they, they hit the ground running. So they have a three-day week, a two-day week, and then we've kind of eased them in and then they hit the, the five-day week. I don't know. Just looking at it from an educator perspective, I know that it, it does, um, do something a little different than we have in the past, but there, like you said, there's a reason why. And I wasn't even thinking about that, that being the case, that it's the first day back for, so, yeah.
Do I have a motion? Shannon?
So I move that we begin teacher preparation on September first, conclude teacher preparation on September eighth, recognizing any staff has a, um, obviously a religious waiver if they celebrate Rosh Hashanah, to take those days for that, and starting the first day of school, September ninth.
Do I have a second? I second the motion.
Thank you.
Uh, any additional comments?
Um, I think Mark had a.
Well, I just, I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm just being dense right now and I want to make sure I understand. So Shannon, could you just say literally that again, just so that?
Yes. So I, I reckon, I, um, move that we're going to start teacher preparation on September first.
Okay.
Concluding on September eighth with the first day of school, September ninth. So taking those thirtieth and thirty-first, putting them in the Rosh Hashanah days. Of course, giving a waiver to all staff that would be, uh, practicing that faith.
So, um, teacher prep on the first, then what happens on the second?
So starting teacher prep concluding on the eighth. So, you know, taking those thirty fir-, thirty and thirty-first and putting them to the seventh and eighth. That's all, the Rosh Hashanah days.
For August Academy, is that right?
For August Academy.
Okay. And so the, okay, so this is where I'm still, I'm sorry.
That's right.
So the second and the third, what is happening on the second and the third?
First, second, third are all part of August Academy. So August Academy would be first, second, third, and then.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's five days. I get it. I get it. All right.
Sorry. It's all right.
Got it. Thank you.
I'm going to use the term that Chris Ortega uses, it's making sausage. You know I can't stand it, but it seems like it's what I'm doing right now.
I get it. I get it.
I'm practicing the, the term.
I get it. Yeah.
So, and we will start school September ninth with the, uh, last day of school, September twenty-first. Uh, June twenty-first. Gosh, that'd be a short year.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, to the motion carries, three, two, zero.
Thank you. We'll post that.
Okay. Um, now we're moving into the housekeeping portion. Um, the approval of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one school board minutes. Um, do I have a motion made by Shannon? Second. Andy, um, any updates or changes?
Um, I have one. Um, it looks, at least if, um, it could be investigated. On page one, uh, line number thirty-eight, it says, um, everyone happy, so thank you to this mom of four. And I'm wondering if it should be thank you from this mom of four. But that's the only one that I had. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries, five, zero, zero. Now we are moving on to the consent agenda. John Fabrizio.
Thank you. Before you tonight, you have a list of the two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two educator nomination list. And we have a few resignations. We have Nancy Hobbs, um, tech edu-, tech integrated educator at Merrimack Middle School, Peter Thompson, sixth grade teacher, Master Call Upburn Elementary School, Michelle Lemire, preschool teacher at MES. And finally, Dr. Mark McLaughlin, superintendent of schools. And then we have on it, remote instruction plan for inclement weather. That completes the consent agenda.
Uh, do I have a motion? Uh, Shannon?
I move you accept this presented.
And Ja-, uh, second?
Second.
Jenna? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I can't see. Lori, do you have your?
Uh, sorry.
Opposed, the motion carries, five, zero, zero. Other, uh, correspondence for the board? Jenna?
Um, I spoke with a parent on the phone regarding our return to school plan. Um, that was on whatever, Monday before we had our meeting. And, um, I also had an email from a parent regarding, um, asking about the student rep for the school board.
Thank you. Any other correspondence?
Um, there were a variety of, uh, ones that were sent to the, um, school board as a whole. There were some around travel guidance, um, another one around, um, the transition back to full-time. So I just wanted to say that I've addressed those. And then moving on to comments. So in, um, the consent agenda, um, the resignation of Dr. Mark McLaughlin, um, was announced. So I just wanted to, um, let you know that, um, email will be going out to all, um, going out to, uh, teachers and staff this evening. And I just wanted to read that. Um, the email that would be going out, um, will be from me, um, as given authority by, um, the school board to send. Um, it says, "Tonight, the Merrimack School Board accepted the resignation of Superintendent Dr. Mark McLaughlin, effective June thirty, twenty twenty-one. We are indebted to Dr. McLaughlin for his twelve years of service to the Merrimack School District, both as our superintendent and before that, our assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction. Mark will leave Merrimack a better place through his dedication and work advancing the delivery of education for our students and through his leadership of total district operations in his current role. During the pandemic, he worked tirelessly, many nights and weekends, to keep the district moving forward. We are appreciative of all of his efforts. We wish Dr. McLaughlin the very best in his future endeavors and respect his decision to step away from his role in our district. I know many of you will have questions about the replacement process. The board will communicate this information to the community in the near future. Please feel free to reach out to the board or me if you have any questions. My email address is cinda.gualyumi@sa26.org. Best regards." Along those lines, um, I know that the board had discussed, um, you know, when we, you know, had these conversations, essentially about making it a community approach to the replacement. So there'll be more details about that, um, involving stakeholders into how that will play out. Uh, Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. So I just would, um, like to just add a comment.
Sure.
So I'd like to thank the board for its action tonight in granting my request to resign from my position as superintendent and for concluding our contractual obligations to each other as of June thirty, twenty twenty-one. After twelve years of service in Merrimack, the time is right for me now to focus on new opportunities, different challenges, and on what is best for me and my family. The educators and administrators of the Merrimack School District are among the best anywhere. It has been a true honor to work with so many of them through the many challenges public education has faced in recent years. Their willingness to grow and evolve as professionals and to reflect on their practice for continuous improvement has been an inspiration to me throughout my time in Merrimack. I will always be grateful to them and humbled by them for their service. I will do all I can to support our teachers, administrators, and most importantly, our students in the remaining months of the school year. I look forward to providing guidance on a smooth transition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to rephrase on what I said earlier. Um, and basically what I wanted to say is it's the board's intent to initiate a community-focused search effort to find a replacement. And we will seek representation, um, from the community, families, teachers, staff, district leadership and administration, and students. Um, so as, um, the email that's being sent out, it's really just more to come. These are very early, um, times in this process. Any other comments?
Andy.
Well, first, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Mark for what he's done with the district, uh, both in his current roles and the previous roles as well. Um, a lot of time spent in the district, a lot of changes and advancements. So, um, I know this has been a year of challenges for all of us in ways we can never explain. We'll make great bedtime stories for our grandchildren decades from now. Um, but I wanted to take the opportunity to just share my thanks as well, Cinda has done as well. Um, I'd also like to sort of, since this is my last meeting too, to, uh, to sort of thank the voters, thank the administration, thank the school board members for, for being partners and, and working together over the last nine years now. When I was elected three years ago, um, for my third term, I decided right then and there that was my last because I'm a believer that you don't do this stuff forever, that it's time for people with other, other interests, kids still in, in school, um, different viewpoints. Um, it's an evolving thing. It's a growing thing. It, it's a living thing to be part of this. I will say that being on the board has been one of the most difficult things I've ever done because, and, and for those of you that are, that are running, there will at least be one new member of the board in a few weeks, potentially as many as three, depending on the way the voters are. This is, the decisions that you make are life-changing for people. You see the decisions we make at the table, um, we catch, we catch either praise or flak, depending on what we make. But the other decisions you make in non-public sessions, things that are more personal that the school board gets asked to do, um, they're just very difficult to make. And it's weighed on me time and time again, sleepless nights over some of the decisions we've had to make. And I'd just like to make sure that everybody understands what a school board member has to do when they do this. And you have to listen. I mean, we get, in this past year, we've been told that we're not listening. The problem is, is the only source of listening is not Facebook. It's not a survey that somebody does. It's everything. And I think I made the comment the other day is that for as much as we hear on one side that's very visible to the community, there's other sides that we hear that aren't visible to the community. And what we other board members need to do is take that all into account. We have our own personal biases or beliefs or whatever. And in the end, you may choose to stick to whatever your position was, but you've got to listen to it. Shannon used the expression, my favorite expression is sausage making. Because, and I know that we, we use that sometimes begrudgingly, but it helps the community to see us make sausage at the table to show that we haven't made a decision coming into the meeting. They've got to see us looking at the pros and the cons and, and taking the input that we hear, you know, the pa-, the people. I mean, I, I know we haven't been able to bring people into the, into the audience because of COVID, but when they were here, we'd get all kinds of different viewpoints. We'd get it in emails. We'd get it in stuff. You've got to look at the big picture and take that all into account. Because at the end of the day, you're representing the students of all levels in the district. You're representing parents, teachers, staff. It's a very, very important and difficult job that I, I can't, I, it's hard for me to explain to somebody else what this really means. And, um, I wa- want to thank the voters for letting me do this for, for nine years now and Budget Committee before that. Um, and just to be clear that I'm staying in Merrimack. I've been here for fifty, fifty-three years now, almost of my life. And I'm going to retire here. So I'm going to be keeping tabs on what happens with the school and the town. And I may not be involved, but I'm going to be a resident for as long as I can see. So I'd like to thank everyone and signing off.
Thank you, Andy. Any other comments? Shannon?
I just want Andy to have the last word, so I don't have it. And, uh, Chris Ortega said it very nicely. Chris and I came on the board together and Andy joined us shortly after, so. So we wish you all the best. We thank you for your service and we remiss of, and I always call, if I have to call your house for anything, I sh- I thank Shirley for her sacrifice as well, your wife, because we know that, uh, we have taken time that, uh, you could have been doing the honey-do list that didn't get done for the last nine years. So thank, thank your family for us as well.
Any other comments? Jenna?
I'll, I'll start with Andy. Um, I just want to say thank you, of course, I was, I've been a, I don't want to say fan, that's the wrong word, of the school board for a long time, but, you know, following the school board for a long time. And I've appreciated the work that you do. I've pre-, I appreciate the balance that you provide and your voice and you're very pragmatic. And, and I've been deeply grateful for your mentorship just in these last few months, just in helping me figure out what this all means and which way is up and how these things get done. So I've, I've thank, thank you for that so much. And, and Dr. McLaughlin, I just want to also personally thank you so much. You know, unfortunately, your role as superintendent here became something that nobody ever meant or could have expected it to be. And it presented challenges, you know, that were far outside the scope probably of anything that you could have ever been prepared for in your education or years of experience. It is without question that you always had the best interest of students at heart, their safety, um, their well-being, their mental and emotional well-being. And I don't think that there's anybody that could argue that that was first and foremost in your mind. And because of that, you know, our, our kids will do well coming out of this. And we, we do owe that piece of it to you and I do deeply appreciate that. And I want to say also that your years of service as the assistant superintendent have also, you know, put us in a great position that some of the things that we talked about tonight, you know, many of the things that we talked about tonight come out of that service and your service even during this time. So I just, I just want to say thank you to you as well.
That's very kind. Thank you.
I agree. Echo those comments as well, Jenna. Thank you. Nicely said. Um, now we're moving on to item number fourteen, which is the public comments on agenda items. Oh, yeah. What did I say? Oh, sorry. All right. We'll go to new business, number twelve. Got a little, uh, Jenna?
So you can tell me if this is not the time to bring this up, but can I ask a question about the student rep on the school board? Um, it's come up a couple of times. I had the question myself personally. And then I got an email about it and I also saw other things about it. Um, it, I, I, I don't even know where, who to ask that question to.
What's the status? Why?
Yeah, what, yeah. Usually there is one and I know, I feel like before that I was on the board, I watched a meeting and it said there wasn't going to be one because of COVID. Um, but then I don't, I don't really know what happened. And, and that, I could be literally imagining that.
Uh, so I communicated with Mrs. Putney about that question and I understand that there was an election uh, that happened, I think, a student council election in February. You know, this has been a very unusual year. Uh, and, um, see if I, I wasn't prepared to, uh.
Well, and that's okay. We can always come back.
But I have, I can, well, let me just, uh, anyway, there was an election. There was someone in February, I believe, who was, um, uh, one. And so that person can be brought to the board, you know, whenever it wishes. But I, I can't speak to the process at the high school for the elections and so on. I mean, as I say, it's been a very unusual year, but I can follow up at our next meeting prior to that.
Yeah. I just, I, I just, you know, it was one of those things where I remember noting it at the beginning of the year and then, you know, it, it's been a year. So I, that wasn't one of my top priorities to follow up on it. I just kept forgetting. And, and quite frankly, I don't know how it's chosen either. So I. And, and quite frankly, I don't know how it's chosen either, so I wouldn't have even known it was an election, so, yeah, if, if we can get that, the ball rolling on that, like I said, I, I think we've all just got our heads above water just enough to start even paying attention, that sort of thing, and that would be great, I think.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
Any other new business? Committee reports? Shannon?
I have two. First, the Parks and Recreation Committee met on the 17th, which yes, it was St. Patrick's Day, and we met instead. So let me just pull up notes. There was a lot going on that will be impacting families, and a lot of them will be students in our district. So we did already have the Easter egg hunt, which of course was different this year, so families could pick up batches of eggs. We had 10,000 eggs filled with, with treats to give out. So coming up sooner than later, so coming up this Saturday, April 10th, they are doing the Spring Community Cleanup Day, and they're tying it into the 275th Anniversary Celebration, which is being spearheaded by Parks and Rec, by the way. So they are, they're kind of leading that, all the celebrations associated with our anniversary, which by the way, was last Friday. So we turned 275 last Friday as a town. So if you are interested, it will be Saturday, so they will give out gloves, trash bags, and masks, and they're asking people to sign up in advance, and they can select a location in town where they want to clean, so if it's close to their, their home or a place where they spend their time. So there are nine different groups right now, over 80 volunteers already scheduled to participate, but the more the merrier, you know, more hands later work, as they say. But go to the Parks and Recreation website and you can get all the information right there. The 275th Anniversary, again officially, occurred on the, the 2nd. There are already about a dozen events planned, and details can be found at merrimacknewhampshire.gov/275th, that's 275TH, or on the Facebook page, so facebook.com/merrimack275th, 275th. I think it's just hard to say through, hear through the mask, so I want to make sure you heard it. There are also, because movies have been, they always have movie nights throughout the summer, and movies have been not coming out really, especially family movies, there haven't been a lot of them. So they did basically a March Madness bracket, and throughout March, they chose the four movies that they will screen next summer, and that should be concluded and it should be up on the website which ones are there. So look at the website for that. And then they're also collaborating with the library, and I know that our students are very tethered to our library. So they're doing Moonlight Trails and Tales. The first is Friday, April 23rd, and then they're doing another one on Friday, May 21st, again in association with the library. So there's a short moonlight walk on the trails at Wasserman Park, and then people come back to enjoy roasting marshmallows at a campfire and listening to a story read to them but from the library. So they're trying to tie stories in the local history, but it will be a family friendly event. There is a cost involved, it's $5 per family, and spaces are limited, so you have to register in advance, again, go to the website to do so. More stuff coming up for the 275th, they're doing a new baby contest, they're going to start that around, actually, I think they kicked it off last week. And then they will, the one, the baby born closest to April 2nd will win a 275th Anniversary onesie and a $100 gift certificate to buy, buy by baby. So if you had a baby last week or close to April 2nd, you might be able to win as long as you live in Merrimack. And then May 15th, they're going to be doing a 2.75 mile, not quite 5K road race, and it will begin and end at Town Hall. And again, all the information is on Parks and Rec's website. So they are ramping back up. Really, when you talk about business, the things that really affect the school district, they are going to be resurfacing the tennis courts, but are going to wait until after our high school completes their season, so they're going to tend to leave mid-June to resurface the tennis courts that our tennis team uses. And then they are working, they'll be doing the Wasserman Park Beach Project, and that is currently out for bid, but it will be happening this year. Second, the New Hampshire School Boards Association Board of Directors met. Thank you again to Mark for putting together what really impacts Merrimack as it relates to guiding our federal, our federal government, you know, guidelines and, and resources and requirements. And every year, we try to give them an idea of how we can, you know, basically how, what happens in DC affects what we do in Merrimack every day. And so that was shared with our delegation, they appreciate it every year. And then they were talking about programs obviously coming up for things that are federally impactful, like basically summer programs to help students in what they have for educational lag based on what's happened with COVID, and the number of the funding programs that they have for technology and how at least this round of funding didn't have the same short runway for completion of those projects as the, the first round that we had, that we had, I think, six weeks to use, which didn't give us the best ability to, to really maximize its, its utilization. So, but that feedback from, again, was, you know, the senators and congressmen from DC, they're, they're education experts around with us. And that about covers it. So I think those are my, my reports.
Thanks, Shannon. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, now we will move to Public Comments on Agenda Item, item number 14. We'll first undertake any public comments here in the Matthew Thornton Room. I do see public here, seeing none. Shannon, any public comments?
There is one, I'm going from my email with my notes on Parks and Rec, to, over to that, so give me one moment, please, bear with. And back, back. And, oops. Give me just one moment, and I do have it. So thank you for your patience on that. So it's from Maureen McGregor at 3 Harwich Court. "To whom it may concern, I would implore the school board, as Merrimack transitions to full-time face-to-face school days, to reinforce the mask policy and compliance within classrooms. I refer you to the Merrimack School Mask Policy," which she links to our policy on her website. "Unfortunately, COVID cases are on the rise with new variants coming out. It is crucial that the board help to support both parents and teachers to enforce compliance as this is not consistently being done within the classroom. Additionally, please help to enforce proper mask-wearing, multi-layer cloth masks, not with vents or gaiters slash buffs, to help the spread of COVID as we transition from six feet to three, to a three-foot social distance. Thank you very much, Maureen McGregor." And that is all of them.
Okay, we'll go ahead and sign the manifest, and I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSE 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, A, B, and C. Do I have a motion made by Andy, second by Shannon? Jenna, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Lori?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
And I vote in favor, that motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you and good night.